And justice for all.
What is your desire with the consent agenda? I don't approve.
Second?
All in favor? The next select board meeting will be Thursday, November 17th, at 5:30 at the West Bass Park Hall. Any announcements from Madeline? Excuse me?
So, we've had some good progress with the broadband committee. The poll agreements have been accepted and they, I believe, put a new poll in on Mountain Road and are working to get the roads that are not on the internet in this town on the internet in this town to that city way forward and at their expense, not ours. It's nice to see how that happened.
Anything for me, Madeline?
For the record, we should say that we presented the Boston Post Kane and the family was assembled, Mrs. Woods, and a good time was had by all. It was a lovely day and everything was outside. And I thought it was an outstanding photograph.
Yes, and it was a nice write-up and a picture of even Kathy in the cryer.
It was, boy, I hope when I'm 100 that...
Oh, spry and edgy.
Yeah, that was pretty cool. Very nice.
I hope when I'm 85, I'm that spry and edgy.
I was trying to think of a year replacement.
Workshop items, planning board reorganization.
And the documents that Christine emailed out, I do have copies there if anyone needs a copy. It's a second big crowd. Jeremy was just leaving, so about 10 minutes ago, so he's on his way.
Do we want to wait and start with something else?
We can if you like, just review the change for the ordinance.
Okay.
Or the committee policy, excuse me.
Do we want to look at the policy on town committee procedures? You want to see?
Yeah. It's just that one change.
Yeah. The amendment on the town committee procedures, proposed amendment, the amendment sets a requirement that meetings not be held on holidays or during an election. I move approval of that amendment.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Town administrators report.
I do not have any particular items that I want to cover tonight.
Any future agenda items?
Walden will be adjourned next meeting on November 17th, they confirmed. So, I'll be here to talk about the prospective solar project.
Do we need to send out the letter of orders for that?
It wouldn't be a bad idea. We could certainly do that.
This would not necessarily be an even, which we approve.
No, there won't be any approvals, it's just discussion, but it wouldn't hurt if other people were in the room.
I think it would be good to for them to understand that it's not the same location as last time because that's going to be the biggest fear. So, I think there would be a lot of interest in whether it's not.
Is there time to do the window?
I did not put out the window bit because I was out last week. And I did wonder if it would make sense to sort of put that on pause, knowing that there's an opportunity for a grant that could cover. The Governor's Office on Policy Innovation and the Future has a grant opportunity for up to $50,000 to cover energy improvements in public buildings. So, that could possibly take care of both the HVAC and the windows and possibly something else that we might come up with. And then we could reappropriate the ARBA funds to another purpose.
Is that, this is just for the town, is the school eligible for another grant? The school itself?
I don't know if they're eligible for a separate grant.
Like the second grant that we're talking about for the energy efficiency?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at it from our perspective, our perspective, public buildings, this building, the fire station.
So, the school now would qualify, it would seem?
Yeah, I mean, I think it might.
Maybe it's worthwhile to let Emily know that in case she doesn't know that there's a grant. If the town gets more money, we should get it.
Did they do their HVAC ready?
Well, there's always improvements that we make, let's face it, there's always improvements.
Well, there's been huge pushes for schools to do the HVAC stuff with the state grants.
I know that they did address air quality issues, but I'm not sure exactly what they've already addressed.
Most of that might have went to the recycling of the air, renewing, some of the old valves you had in there, $20,000 a piece control system and all that.
And we have a little time to look into opportunities in other locations. The grants will be due in March and then they would make their decision shortly after that. But I think, from my perspective, it's worth waiting to see if we can possibly use the ARBA funds for another purpose.
If that is the case, then we would have to have another town meeting to defund the ARBA most.
We could, it would just be a reappropriation, we're going to use it for another purpose.
And we're not going to go that until March anyway, or if we apply, we may not even know until the...
Right. And our town meeting won't be until Mayor June, depending on what kind of town meeting you're planning on having.
Does that make?
Yeah.
Timeline is fine for June.
So, I would suggest waiting.
I'm okay with that.
Yep. Makes sense. If we can double our money, that'd be good.
Yeah.
This is a good time for John to review his.
John, do you want to talk about your consent agreement?
Uh, yeah. Just grab the information, get your... I'll sit back there. This is a property on Shore Cove Road. It's number 54. The owner is John and Diane Morris. 2005, they took out a permit to build a garage. There's an approval from the planning board, you have building permit on the file. Then the garage was put up. It's in the shoreline zone, it was supposed to be 78 to 80 feet away from the water. And a recent mortgage survey showed that it was 46 feet. The parents, John and Diane, are elderly and they're looking to sell a home to, you know, take care of them for the remainder of their lives. And so, the mortgage survey popped up that this was a violation at one point in time that was obviously overlooked.
Yeah.
The problem is, I mean, the evidence that I have to go by shows that there was a permit and approval. I have no idea how it ended up, where it ended up. And I'm also not sure. The mortgage survey is not...
Legitimate survey?
Legitimate survey.
It's not considered that?
It's a irritant. The problem these people are having is they would like to sell this home, I mean, I've got a daughter. This is a holdup because they basically, they wanted a letter from me saying that this was okay and I can't provide a letter like that that says it's okay because it was, I mean, it is a violation. I don't know if it was done intentionally or what, but all these years later, I'm not the one to say whether it was a violation.
So, is it, it's not 75 feet? Maybe not before, but it's not 75. You know, I'm saying with the setback from the water, which then is not a shoreline issue, 75 feet. So, is the garage, is the new structure within the 75 feet of that?
Yes, yeah.
But it may not be 40, but it's not 75 either?
Right.
Okay.
So, they're in the process of having a surveyor come down and get an actual measurement on it. I've talked with our attorney and moving forward, you know, the town has the ability to do a consent agreement based off of a survey. But that would, that would be up to a vote between you, if you, you know, if you would want to allow this to be. The other option would be, they basically would have to take the building down or nobody would ever be able to get a mortgage on this place because of bank, of bad financing, so...
Was there a structure there before? Do we know? So, it's a brand, it wasn't enlarged?
Yeah, it was only 2005, so...
So, before I, before I would want to agree or not agree, can we go down and see it? Can we view it?
Yeah, you can.
After the survey, I think, would be sensible.
I wonder if, does this fall in the spectrum also if something goes that's not 20 years? A challenge?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's the, you get somewhere out there anyway. It's close, three years away from a 20-year challenge.
Like 15 years or...
17, yeah.
For me, it's, the toughest part of the situation is the fact that if this was, if this was a permit that was taken out while I was in this position and I didn't know exactly what happened and what was going on, it would be different. You know, buildings sometimes do have to be moved. In this case, it's been there for quite a long time and it's like a big obvious mistake. I have no idea how it could possibly be made. So, I would really be curious to see, you know, what a surveyor comes up with for a measurement.
So, you give a permit for, say, this garage? Do you go down and do an inspection after it's up?
Yeah, I, I'm hoping about looking in on the permits that I write. So, if I were to, if I were to go by there and see something like that being constructed, I would automatically just be able to tell that it was too close to the water and you have to go ahead and stop. So, that may not have happened at this time, I don't know. It's really hard to say. And it's, you know, it's hard to say when you're dealing with people that have always pretty much been outstanding citizens of the town. I don't really think that they would want to go out of their way to do something like that. They had the room to go forward. But again, I can't answer because I wasn't looking. So, I guess it's up to the town, but you know, if you want to help them forward or this or not.
I think we should certainly wait to see the survey and see what it tells us.
Okay.
And then take it from there.
Does this David May have anything to say about those sorts of things?
I don't really think the DEP would have a whole lot to say. I think that David said, what do you want to do with it?
Okay.
That's my experience of them so far.
Yeah. I move that we wait to have the survey completed.
Okay.
And any time when that's done, hopefully we can, before the snow falls, visit site. But until then, I don't want to make any determinations when I go in.
Could we have a shorter motion? Think we need a motion of moving, so, I think. If the three of us agreed that we hold off until after we had more information, that should be sufficient.
Ultimately, a... Yep. So, like DEP, if you guys gave a permit from DEP and like when I went through my probation, DEP would not grant a permit within 75 feet. So, like even if the town said yes, DEP would have, they would go back to our ordinance and say there's nothing in our ordinance that allows that. So, like even if you guys could say yes, I don't think it would pass the DEP muster and it would get thrown back anyways. Within that 75 feet.
That's been my experience as well.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. The attorney, the attorney didn't mention having to deal with any of that in her past. That's something that I can certainly look in on and find out about.
I think that would be helpful, that we, we don't make anything any messier than it already is.
Yeah. Exactly. Ultimately, the agreement would, you know, would be in the file forever and recorded in the registry as well. So, it would be something that would remain and couldn't be, you know...
Challenge.
Couldn't be challenged in the future. So, that's what it is and I'll let you know when we get that back in, we can go for an adjustment.
Thank you, thanks. John?
Yes.
Thanks for doing a thankless job. So, we, any other future agenda items? Okay, we'll go back to planning board reorganization. Did everyone have a question?
Yeah. Just one, 31.
The whole set. Very ridiculous of the section.
I did?
Yeah.
David, do you have anyone to log down there, please?
I did that one, I just, sorry. I messed up the whole works. It's two different ones.
Make the whole set.
The whole of that.
Thank you.
The whole Chris Cross section.
This whole section.
Go down to the next, that whole thing. We take the agenda with it, you get the whole section.
This one, yeah.
Yeah, that'll work.
Sorry, I'm sure it'll all...
I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle this workshop tonight, so it's really up to you, how you want to move forward with discussion and...
Any thoughts?
What you want to talk about. I just provided this information thinking it could be helpful for the conversation.
Well, I guess I have, I do have some questions. It appears procedurally, you did not follow procedure based upon email that was shared with us. Is that accurate on how you examine sessions and...
Well, I'm not, I didn't think we were discussing that particular issue tonight.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about how to move forward with the planning board.
As I read it, it seemed to be that it reflected the discussion that we had had and that this is an attempt to put into place the discussion that was had on the workshop in August.
I guess, I'm all for putting the workshop in place, but it seems like it's the cart before the horse hit. Did we finish that discussion? Are we, I'm just, because there was no response from anybody there, so I'm not sure where that ended up. To move forward, I think we need to make sure that...
I felt it was complete because I didn't have any communication from anybody saying that it wasn't. If it wasn't complete, I wouldn't need to hear from the board.
Certainly. I think there was a letter sent in.
So, what I wanted to do was go through the recommendations that were made by...
The select board asked for this meeting. At your last meeting, you asked for this workshop.
Correct.
You weren't specific about what you wanted to cover. I put information together, thinking that it could be helpful to the conversation. But this is really, it depends what you were hoping to discuss tonight.
I would love to.
Now, you would like to move forward.
My plan, for sure.
Right. I think that's way, if I can speak, I think that the plan moving forward is way more important than the workshop items that we discussed with Sally, you know? But we need to figure out what's going on with the planning board. I mean, I think we just need to have an open conversation. It's obviously awkward, right? But we need to have an open conversation of what's going on. You know, I think, like, you know, I think we all communicate pretty well, but like I also think that we probably, you know, five minutes of phone call to keep everybody up to date what was going on would help too. I just think we just have to be above this and speak what's on everybody's minds, like what the issues are, you know, why this select board doesn't want Darlene on the planning board, what those issues are. And I mean, I think, I mean, we're all adults, we can talk about that and in a similar manner, I think, I think that's important, you know? To hear for all of us. I know it's hard, right? I know it's hard, it's not easy to say this stuff, but I think it's important.
I don't have any objection to taking that track at all. It's just from an administrative perspective, I understood that we were to talk about roles and responsibilities. But if the board wants to move in that direction, that's...
Well, I just think we had, when we set this on the agenda, that was prior to an email that had gone out, so I feel that there's an unanswered element to that, to even move forward here. I mean, that's, I just feel, there was, there was no response that came from that letter, so I don't know. I mean, if we're trying to set a precedent, we need to understand how to move forward and not end up where we were last time. And so, I guess that's, we're all confused here.
Dave, do you want to say something?
No, I guess not.
I mean, you should, John, I think you should.
Say it.
I think you want to finish the business that you had with Darlene, whatever that is, and then call me and I'll come to a meeting and we can discuss moving forward. Is that, I mean, I don't know anything, Jerry doesn't know anything. How long we got to go for when with this being this way? We got to have a planning board meeting for this month, that's still on schedule, we have people that want to be on the agenda. So, bury the hatchet with a share of the board and I'll come back, I guess. That's kind of what I'm saying.
I actually think that we all pretty much feel this way because I think that when it was first discussed, whether or not Darlene was going to continue on the board, I felt that the select board was pretty clear in their decision. I moved forward based on what I heard from the board. And I don't feel there's any lack of clarity at this point. You said what was going to happen, I had to deliver the hard news, which I did, and, you know, nobody wants to take ownership of that.
Part of my question, and I'm certainly not the expert on protocol and procedure for meetings, I look at you to be the expert as our town administrator. And it appears, and maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, that we didn't follow procedurally what was supposed to happen there.
I understood for you, Suzanne, that you had numerous conversations with Darlene about, about her behavior, about her tone, about how she presented herself to not only the planning board, but to other town officials. I understood that those conversations had already taken place.
We had not several, we had one, and that's not what I'm referencing here. I'm referencing procedurally what we did in the executive session and was that procedurally correct? That's my first question.
What part of what we did in the executive session?
So, again, I'm not the expert, but based upon some information provided by Darlene, anyone that we talk about in the executive session is supposed to be present and be able to voice their opinion. And I think if that's the case, we didn't do it properly. And I would think any person on staff or on a committee that is going to be challenged for anything, that they have the right to be brought forward and discussed it with, and that never happened.
Well, my question to you would be, why not? I mean, if you wanted that to happen. Now, committee members are a little bit different than...
These are not employees.
Than employees.
But they deserve the same respect.
There is, that's possible, they deserve the same respect, I'm not arguing that. But legally, the same requirements do not hold. I was never directed by the board to ask Darlene to come to a meeting, to have a conversation with Darlene. Under, under West Bass's structure, the select board is responsible for appointed committee members. If any conversations were to be had, they would have been had by this body unless I was directed to have a conversation with an appointed committee member. So, if you want to go back and start the process, I will, we can do that.
I'm asking a clarified question right now. What did we follow protocol in that procedure?
What you did was legal.
I'm not the expert on it.
That's all I can tell you.
I don't, I'm not an expert, I'm looking for you for that direction.
There was nothing illegal about the action that you took with an appointed committee member.
So, with Darlene's email, you found nothing that she said or referenced as improper procedures that this board did?
Correct.
And I'm not the one to answer that question because I'm not fluent in the procedure of that component. And that's what I'm concerned with, no one responded to that letter and that claim. And so, I'm lost as to what are, you know, procedurally, were we accurate in doing it? And if you're saying we are, and I don't know if you can respond, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know that we're involved.
I'm saying there's many ways that this board could have handled that situation. The way that it was handled was not illegal.
Right.
You could deem it improper, you might want to do something differently now we're in the future, but there was nothing illegal about the proceedings.
And we had just, as, we had just passed the committee policy, which said that persons should not be on more than two committees. The person in question was on two committees. We have also received a number of complaints about, from various people, about the behavior...
Hold on, hold on, are you going to talk personnel issues?
Well, that's why I was trying to be direct, because I don't think it's...
Because someone else in this room was also on more than two committees, we're going to follow or we're not.
There's lots of people, there's nothing in, would you let me read you the statute since you're thinking that not everyone...
I don't, I don't know how to interpret it, so I, sure, I mean, I read it and what you said.
Well, it was sent to the town attorney also, has she interpreted it?
No, she's not going to respond to an email from an appointed committee member. She doesn't respond to that.
So, you're telling me that I sent a letter with three different, two statutes and one town policy that was violated when you terminated my appointment and no one has asked the town attorney to look into it to see if that's valid or not? That's what you're saying?
I need direction from the board if you want me to do that.
Christine, I think, I think we're playing, I disagree with that. You wrote the letter, I think you need to follow up on it.
I wrote the letter.
But you told me I can't speak to the town attorney, the town attorney is copy that.
I don't tell you you can't speak to the town attorney, the town attorney tells you you can't speak to the town.
You told me I'm not allowed to speak to the town attorney and Madeline told me that I was way off my rocker when I tried to do it.
What are we doing tonight?
This has nothing to do with what's going on with the...
Oh, you bring it straight out.
Yeah, I could be right behind you. Yeah, I could have been right behind you, John.
So I'm just trying to clarify. I don't, I, I would like clarification on procedurally. I'm not saying we're going back on it. I, I stopped my call today.
Is this for, not Suzanne, but is this for the three of you as a body? Are you directing me to contact the town attorney about this?
No.
Because I have not spoken to any of you. None of you have come in to talk to me about this. I assumed everything was fine. I informed my staff of the decision, and you continued to undermine what I'm doing. So you, as a body, not Suzanne,
Right.
Need to tell me how you want me to move forward.
We told you two weeks ago, in the last meeting, that we were standing behind the action and the letter.
That's what I heard.
That hasn't changed for me.
It hasn't changed, but I'm not, for me either, but I'm not sure that we've done things and maybe we face the consequences if we haven't, whatever that may be.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So whose responsibility is it to make sure that there's proper operation? How terminations are taking place and other actions within the, I mean, who made sure that you guys are legally making the correct decision? Is it Christine who's supposed to do the research, or is it one of the board members that's supposed to do the research?
Not one of the board members. It's never one of the board members.
Okay. So ultimately, I think that's kind of maybe the missing piece, like, who's supposed to figure out how this is done? Like, it seems really odd to me, when Darlene just asked the question, she sent out a, a response letter to her termination to the board, as well to the administrator, and nobody followed up or to make sure that this was done legally or properly.
I think when you have a select board and you can't talk between meetings, it really hinders, hinders-
Sure.
The process, because you can't have these discussions about, Madeline, you've ever been through this process before, um, how has it been done in the past? Hasn't it been done in the past? Can we find another town that maybe that's, that's done it? Are we following proper channels? And I know why we can't, but this has been the most frustrating part for me, is that we don't talk to one each other between these meetings.
We, we, we're not getting enough done as a, and I brought this up before, I personally think we should have five select board members so that we can have a conversation and not have an illegal meeting. That, I'll put that on record. Um, but I just think we're, there's things that we're not getting done, and I feel like we've missed elements procedurally. And, and I look at Christine to be the expert in that. None of us are here running the town-
I told you already Suzanne, that you're, the procedure that you followed was fine. There was nothing illegal about the procedure that you followed. It's either you're standing behind your decision or you're not, and if you're not-
It's not, I'm, I'm not talking about a decision. I'm talking about a procedure. There's a very different-
And I, I'm telling you-
What's the difference between-
The procedure you followed was fine.
And the decision that we made was fine.
And it turns out that it's not. Why, why, I would, you know, why did our town-
Based on what?
With whom is it not?
If there is a law written by the state that we are supposed to follow as a select board, we should be following it.
I, I think the interpretation of the law is not, I, well, the only way I can say is that the procedure that you followed was fine. But if you want to backtrack on your decision and have me check with Sally, I would be more hap- than happy to do that.
We can't move forward.
I felt like the decision was final. It was clear to me when we spoke that, that your decision was final.
The decision was discussed. Twice. Four times, actually. I'm disgusted at the fact that I was never consulted about this, that I never spoke to any of you, that I was never invited to the four different executive sessions that you had about this to even answer to anything that was discussed. I was terminated, and yes, it is a violation of the Freedom of Access Act. Two different violations.
Remember meeting four times? We may have, I, I don't remember, but-
And your votes within your executive session are also not legal.
But my-
The voters used to come out.
We did call you and want to talk to you. And we had a conversation with you. I can't remember when, but after that meeting, you met with the whole group of you.
It was a year and a half ago when American Steel was having a fit because we approved that and we asked them for their stuff.
Every time I've gone to a meeting with, um, the Comprehensive Plan, or ASI, or ASA, your comments have always been condescending in saying, "I have to do what the select board says. They want me just to give everybody a permit." It always feels like you think we're trying to sabotage you, so you started talking badly about this. All we were trying to do was work with you, and it didn't stop for that whole year and a half. So I'm just saying, where I found the issue, you know-
So, so you thought it was okay just to decide without even talking to anybody?
And I invited you to meet with the board, Darlene, and you did not respond to me. I asked you-
I said I wasn't sure if I wanted to or not. I had been ignored.
Well, when they had, I asked you several times if you wanted to meet with the board. You never got back in touch with me.
Because I wrote my letter, and then I was asking for a response, and in the letter, I asked to meet with the board. So that was the answer to your question, and I've been ignored for two and a half weeks now. Zero response. I asked in my response to meet with the board, which was what you asked me. I wasn't sure at that point, and then I was sure, and I've been ignored.
And now you're meeting with the board, as you know.
No, I'm not.
Here you are.
I was here because it's a public meeting. I wasn't here to meet with the board. I did not start any of this conversation.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a loaded question.
Yeah.
Are you prepared to accept the termination of your position as it sits today? Or would you like further dialogue?
I really don't think that you understand what my problem is right now.
She won't answer a question.
I will answer a question, but you don't understand what I'm complaining about right now. The thing I cannot go around having executive sessions discussing people without having them present. It's a violation of the, of the, uh, access.
So then I-
And you can't make votes inside of an executive session either. That is also a clear violation of the state's statute.
So can we get clarification?
So, and-
What would the board like me to do?
I was, my issue is I responded, and I asked, I pointed these things out, and I asked to have an executive session meeting. I did get, I got no response. I sent it to all four of you and the town attorney. No one responded to me. There is not an executive session slated for today. So I'm getting ignored. And I think it's wrong. I think it's such a struggle. I think all the times I've volunteered in the last 20 years of this town, it's just really awful. That's my problem. That is my problem right there. And then you guys didn't communicate with these guys about the board and what was going on either. I've done it for too long and care too much about it. That's my problem. You should not shoot people like that.
In terms of the discussion, if you want this discussed in a public meeting, okay.
No, I don't. I requested an executive session with the board selectmen. And I'm just, no response.
I didn't have a letter in front of me. I don't really follow the letters.
I can read it to you. I have it.
So, I, can I speak? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, so I, I feel as though we could go round and round about this all night, right? It sounds like to me that the town selectmen and the administrator feel that Darlene's letter may be inaccurate. Could we clarify that and then revisit this issue because, again, I feel like we do this all night.
Yeah, and I don't want to, and I wasn't trying to hijack the meeting, but it was clear to me that no one was going to respond to me and my request, so I came to a meeting, which would be the only time that I would be able to see outside of you actually calling an executive session.
I agree with Jerry. You've got to get that clarified, for better or worse. Get that clarified, stop this tonight, and then either have an executive meeting, uh, with her, or, or a public meeting about the whole thing, which you can't. If there's any question about, about procedure, legal, illegal, whatever, I'm afraid you can't go forward. You find that out.
Yes.
That's the best way to start is just go with that and see what's going on. See what our attorney has to say about this. It may be, it certainly could be legal, but it's a committee member, not an employee per se.
Right. I have no problem with the information that Darlene came up with. It's, what she came up with is accurate.
And why did we vote?
I, I, I agree with saying about that.
That it was happening.
The party's legal and all that kind of thing, but you have to, you have to find out for the benefit of the town and everybody else, yes, this is a proper procedure, and whatever else happens, happens.
And I agree. I think we should put a, a, a legal termination one way or the other, and then finish that component, and then move forward with the planning, for the planning board.
Just, can I say something more? But Madeline, before, when they kind of blew up here, you said that there's multiple complaints about Darlene from applicants, and, and I believe that there's probably a ton of complaints about people, right? But in general, half the applicants that probably always complain, I know, like, people complained to me in town about the process and everything, and that's why I spoke to Darlene about the process. But then the applicant never, 99% of cases, never followed the procedure, never did the right thing. And they just walk into a meeting and they think they're going to get approved for things.
Right.
And then Darlene does most of the talking in the meeting, so she's kind of the one that gets blamed for a lot of this, and that's not fair, and that's not accurate, you know? So, that, that's just, just, just the kind of point of what you started bringing up before.
I can understand that.
And I think Darlene gets a lot of heat because she does most of the talking. She's very smart and educated, and, and she's the one that gets the wrath because she did most of the talking, and some of us didn't do the talking. Whereas if we did the talking, they'd probably be complaining about us, you know, so that's where I think it's really unfair to Darlene, you know, on that aspect.
And, um, and I would, I would also, um, echo Kathy's observation that the treatment that we have received as members of the board has been rude and, um, disrespectful, um, including a number of comments that have gone out community-wide, um, on community-wide emails, in which she has inaccurately charged me with not reading my email. What I have said repeatedly is that I do not read my email on her schedule. And I have also made the observation that many of us get lots of emails in a day, and it is very easy to miss one. So it is unfair to expect that everybody has seen everybody's emails. It is not that I do not read my emails. It is just that I may not have read them five minutes before a meeting. And that charge has been leveled at me at least twice in emails that went out to the rest of the community.
I apologize. I've heard you in meetings say that you don't read your emails. I just want to make sure that Christine made sure that you were aware of what was being sent out.
I said, not that I did not read my emails, but that I do not read them necessarily on your schedule. And that is in reference to a number of occasions in which you have brought proposals-
Oh, no, this was you were talking to Suzanne when she had sent something to you, and you said, "I don't read your emails."
Uh, that was because she was illegally communicating with a fellow board member between meetings.
Okay. Understood.
We do not communicate with one another except in public.
Informational email sharing is allowed, is it not, Christine?
Informational, yes, as long as no responses are made.
So I don't think I had any illegal email communication in that statement.
I would disagree.
You're entitled to it, Lynn.
Thank you. That's very generous of you. This is the kind of shit, pardon my language, that needs to stop. On this board and any other board, it's not going to get us anywhere.
I agree.
So moving forward. Where, what's our next, what's our next steps here? What's the, what is the select board looking for from the planning board at this point?
Do we want to still proceed with the workshop concept this evening, or do we want to pause all of that and come back?
I want to pause all of that and come back because I don't think we have a clue what we're doing. And it makes it awful hard to move forward. We don't even know what the planning board looks like. We don't even know what we're going to do as people who are waiting for meetings.
Well, we have three members that are wanting to serve the need right now.
Right, and I thought that's where we were.
And that's, that's the discussion.
And as John has indicated, there are people that are waiting to have considerations about the board. So, um, we have to meet on the 8th because it's an election day, of course. But perhaps another day, and we have people that need to be competitive.
We can't stop progress. We can't stop progress.
It seems to me that in this point, at this point in time, that in order to move forward with applicants, that we need to consider Darlene's termination as it's in place. And then if you want to reconsider it at another time, then you can do that. But like Jim is saying, if there's applications pending, this group needs to meet.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that nobody was left for the last-
Well, what we have, what we need for a quorum is only three.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, three of us can make it. That is a quorum. We can continue to meet. Certainly, I don't want to diminish, you know, these other issues, but, uh, things do need to move ahead, and people are waiting. And John is somewhat frustrated, I know too, and, you know, because he has no way of following to indicate to the applicants, you know, what, what they need to do.
So, and just to be clear, I am not trying to hold up any sort of progress. The last meeting didn't happen because the board selectmen, the select board used the night that we were all able to go, and the 8th is election day. So nothing that has to do with me is holding up any of these meetings.
And nobody has said that, no, no, we're not implying that.
I'm just looking for some sort of audience with the selectmen to find out exactly what's going on, a little bit of respect to the fact that I deserve that.
I agree.
And I'm gonna, whatever. It's just, I think it's been done really badly.
We need to go ahead as if she's been terminated, have the planning board meet, check with Sally to see where we are, and give her her due diligence, and let her have an executive session with the board.
When would you like to hold the executive session? Um, Ron will be at the next meeting, but he wants to meet with you at the end of the meeting. Depending on how much time you think you need, you can meet at 5:00 o'clock next time. Or-
Okay.
At any other time that you choose.
Is there any possibility of meeting anytime next week? I, that week I have surgery on the, on the 14th. So it's Tuesday, but I'm only a couple of days out of anesthesia. I'm working as well, Suzanne.
And I don't know how much time Sally needs to review Sally.
Do you want to put it on the 10th, which is a Thursday, a traditional Thursday? Does that work with everybody?
That works. Darlene, does that work with you?
Um, the 10th?
Yeah.
No, I have a work thing.
How about the 9th? Does that work for everybody?
No.
Do you? It's an election day.
No.
Oh, that's right.
And Sally needs time.
Right, yeah.
You know, she has to go on her play.
Well, the following week is, um, we'll just meet on the, can you meet on the 17th? We'll just do it early.
That's what I just said. On the 17th, I will be two days out of anesthesia.
So we can't go sooner than that, and the following week is Thanksgiving week. They want other people to travel for that.
I don't. What's your, how are we good, how are you?
How's your week of Thanksgiving look? With the beginning, the 21st, 22nd?
22nd on the bank war. 21st is a Monday.
21st is a Monday. Yeah, 21st is never a good day for me.
We need a way to move forward. So I guess give us some days that work for you.
You've already decided how to move forward.
No, for the, your session, Darlene. Is there a date that works for you that we can back into?
I guess the 21st, I guess.
Does that work for you guys?
Mm-hmm.
What, John?
You're asking me? Um, 6 o'clock.
That worked okay for you?
Mm-hmm. So can I ask why no one invited me to any of those other executive sessions before? The rationale?
Procedurally, I didn't know what that was supposed to be, to be frankly honest. I'm not, I didn't know what the protocol was. I looked at Christine for that direction. So just.
So you didn't realize that the time that maybe it would be inappropriate not to have someone in the room you're talking about?
I didn't know that there was a state statute for that.
It's not, the state statute doesn't apply in this case. I will confirm with Sally, but I'm not talking about the state statute. I'm talking about courtesy.
I'm pretty sure that I stated at our last discussion that I thought that she should have been given the opportunity to talk to.
The last discussion, but not when the decision was made that I acted upon.
Right. No, I actually said in that.
You know, I'm not going to be gaslit into thinking that this is somehow, that I misunderstood something.
Oh, I'm pretty sure if you, not to be having any notes from the executive session, but I stated my.
You don't keep notes in executive sessions.
That's what I was saying. And I stated my opinion that I thought we should allow someone to speak their piece in that moment. I'm confident I said it now.
Not when the decision was first made.
Because there were three different executive sessions and then there was a fourth afterwards.
No, the two.
Huh. Because that's not what Christine said.
There, I think there were three. If I recall correctly, there were three.
Oh, the third one after, totally after the fact.
No, the fourth one was totally after the fact. It was three before the letter was made. And then one the week after that. So that's four. So four times. No courtesy.
I don't remember what it was.
No, we had an executive session. And then the letter came out and then the, and then the letter came.
Yeah, we didn't meet after the letter.
We haven't met since the letter.
All of that is.
You met the night that I sent you the letter in executive session.
Oh, we didn't get it till afterwards.
I know.
So I don't mean to be rude, but that's probably something that you asked me to discuss at the.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yep, not sure.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that in my spot.
Okay.
So I guess, so what do we need to schedule another meeting, a workshop? Are we going to do it in conjunction with a select board meeting or?
I am going to wait for some real direction from the chair of the board before I move forward with anything else. Because I keep preparing information based on conversations that, you know, that I have with the select board. And then it turns out we're talking about something completely different. So I am going to wait for direction from Kathy to see how I move forward.
And see, this is really hard because again, we don't get to talk.
Mm-hmm.
Can I say something? Everybody in this room is a good person. I don't know why you guys could not just sit down with Darlene instead of time over not tonight for 20 minutes, air your differences and try to figure it out. I, you know, Darlene's not prepared to do it. You guys aren't prepared to do it. But you guys could probably sit in this room and you can figure out what the, what the major issues are and if they can be worked through or not. That's.
Does that, this meeting have to be an executive session or can it be a discussion?
Well, I think we would all want to give Darlene like privacy.
That's what I'm saying. I would do. It's feeling quite as we don't have, it's not on the agenda to have an executive session. So can that discuss, my question is procedurally, can that conversation happen and not as an executive session?
If Darlene wants it that way.
Current state statute, I can request an open session instead of an executive session if I want to.
So this is, I guess.
It wouldn't be the board's decision. It would be Darlene's decision.
Well, that's what I'm trying, I didn't, procedurally, because we didn't have it listed as an executive statute, we can't then have one.
You can have an executive session as long as you recite. Yes, as long as you recite the appropriate statute.
What is your preference?
It's not something that I really want to deal with tonight. Honestly, I came just to ask during the public comments why no one has responded to me in over two weeks. I did not come to hijack the planning board reorganization meeting or anything. I was not the one that started any of that conversation. That was not my goal. It was to wait to the public comments and ask why no one had responded to me and to urge you to respond. That was my goal tonight.
And maybe we should all go home and think about it and have another night.
I've been thinking about this for a long time, as the rest of us have. I would like some closure on it.
So right now, if I understand this right, you have an executive session planned for the 21st.
Just an executive session.
Right. And you've also, and you're taking the vote and directing Christine to call and hit the lawyer about these issues.
And what am I asking Sally? I need you to be specific because this keeps coming back on me. You need to tell me what you want.
I guess we want all the questions that Darlene has in her.
Okay, do you have any of your own?
Put it in the email inside the door.
That would be helpful.
She's got it. She's got it.
That was from the board.
Oh, yeah. So it also actually violates main statute 2601 with the definition of just cause.
I think we have just cause.
What, what is that?
That, we're just, we're looking for the procedural determination. And did we go by what we were supposed to do and have it? And certainly, I, I would say.
My question, they're not going to answer.
So what?
Plus, A, is the 21st a set meeting? B, is the board going to make an official motion to tell Christine what they want asked? And that's what I'm asking. Nothing else at this point. Just that.
I move that not, I move that we had Christine clarify with Sally the elements that Darlene stated in her letter.
I think it needs to be much more specific than that. What we need is clarification about whether or not a committee member is considered an employee by state statutes. And do, and do committee members in, on a town committee have the same protection under the law as the, as an employee would in a right-to-work state?
I'd like Sally to determine that. I, I don't, I don't want to be that narrow-minded. I want Sally to look at the comments made by Darlene and tell us if we were procedurally correct or not.
I like Jerry's idea. Please email me with your comments. And I will cover all of the questions that you need answered.
Yes.
So are we moving, do we need to have a mo, a motion to have her go to Sally? Or we're just saying go to Sally based upon our comments? Are we required to have a motion, I guess, following up about what David's question was?
Under the circumstances.
Yes.
Um, so I move that we had an executive session with Darlene on the 21st at 6 o'clock at the town hall. Is there a second on that? That's, that's the, that's the first one.
A second, yeah.
All in favor? The second motion is that the board instructs Christine to consult with Sally, hopefully before that date, to find out what the specific rules are governing committee members in the state of Maine. And if it is possible for Sally to address further questions, those questions that are emailed to her, do you want to set a date, a deadline?
I'm not on board with that as a motion. So I, we're not, I, I think we need to address the exact questions that were in the letter. Not whether as a committee you're allowed or not to. Procedurally, are the elements that Darlene put in that letter accurate in nature? Which falls to committee, employee, Sally can determine whether, is it only for employees? Is it for everyone that's brought into an executive, it's discussed in an executive session? I don't want to make it so narrow that we're not answering, addressing the question. Sally should determine protocol based upon what Darlene's concerns are. That's what I think we need to, I, I don't want to say, is it just, I always say only look at it from an employee perspective. I think we need to look at, as the broad picture and have her tell us what we should or shouldn't be doing as our town attorney. I don't want to be so narrow on that.
Yeah, you need to understand the law when it goes, when it pertains to executive sessions.
Did, I, I don't even know, I mean, I don't know if it's only for employees or is it for anyone who's mentioned in the, I don't know that. It's my point is I don't know. So I don't want to say, let's only look at it in this parameter. I'm not comfortable without, let Sally tell us what we're supposed to be doing.
That is then leaving Christine to guess what it is that we want. And she has indicated to us that that is a very difficult position for her to be in.
My expectations of the town administrator is to lead us down the path with proper guidance.
Yes, and I do give you proper guidance and you make decisions based on that guidance. And then when somebody questions you, you shut down and second guess yourselves. It leaves me in a very difficult position. I have been doing this kind of work for 22 years. I know what I'm doing.
And I feel like we, that's why we look to you and ask for your guidance. And then you kind of, tonight waffled and now you're going back to that hard stance and showing.
Waffle what? When did I waffle?
You were, your expressions, emotions, and now you're taking this, the firm stand again. Like, I, I know what I'm talking about, you guys.
I never, I never questioned what I'm talking about. I was, when Suzanne asked me, I said, "You followed procedure."
But I don't know that. You're telling me that and I want to hear that we actually followed it properly. That's my question.
So to look along a little bit, if Mallory gives your motion proof, if you email your.
I'm not going to vote for that motion.
Let me finish. So if you email all your questions that you want, your concerns, and those will be dealt with through an email to Christine.
My concern, that parameter is too narrow.
Question, can't you open it up by asking your own questions? In an email?
And that was, that is.
I appreciate your opinion, David, but that's not where I'm taking it. I think that we should go on a broad perspective.
Yeah, but can't you do that through an email to Christine for questions for Sally? Like you talked about before, air we.
Why can't we just have Sally interpret the letter that Darlene wrote and give us guidance on whether it was done properly or not?
Right. Yeah, that's what would happen if you emailed the questions to Christine.
I think I can state it right now, too.
Well, you got to move this along somehow.
So what's your motion? I move that we have Christine review procedurally the concerns from Darlene's letter and confirm if we were accurate and correct in that process, in all of it, all the elements.
It sounds as if she already did that. She's decided that you were. And I disagree.
I'm sorry?
It sounds like Christine has already done that and she's decided that.
I'm not asking for Christine's opinion. I'm asking for our town attorney's opinion.
Oh, you said Christine just now, though, instead of Sally.
The motion was to direct Christine. Direct Christine to ask her town attorney to interpret the concerns of Darlene's letter and whether we were procedurally corrected on it. Simple discussion.
So is that a second anyway? I'm sorry.
Somebody has to, if they know it, doesn't move forward.
Okay.
She probably doesn't have any time to look at that, so.
I can ask her, but it's gonna, the result is going to be the same. Meeting with, I think, meeting with her.
I don't think so. You have questions.
I guess we can talk about it. I, I would love to discuss it with her, actually, to make sure that her.
I just, I simply don't understand why this is so difficult. The select board is responsible for appointing committee members. The committee members are appointed to serve at the select board's pleasure. If the select board decides that an appointee is not doing what they want them to do, they can end the appointment.
We're not talking about the appointment here. We're talking about the discussion of the manager.
I don't know why this is so difficult.
May I, Jeremy?
Good day.
I'm not prepared to, to not, she has the right to bring her request and none of us responded to it. I don't know how we can because we can't communicate with each other. That's the problem that we just can't talk amongst ourselves. We can't even respond to your letter. And I'm not prepared to take a stance, honestly, to tell you how I think about your letter, working with the other. I'm not, I don't think it should come from me. It should come from the administrator, the town attorney. I don't think any one of us should be the one to respond to you individually, to be frankly honest, which is why I didn't do it. But outside of that, I think I would, because this is so contentious, I think we need to officially put it to rest. And I think we need to address her pieces in that letter officially of our town attorney.
I'll second the motion so that we can move on. And I will send my specific question to you in an email.
Okay, this is what I was asking for. If there are any additional questions beyond Darlene's questions, please send them to me so that Sally can.
Right.
Address them all at the same time.
By what date and time? So we can, I think we need to.
Hopefully, very close.
So, no, long before the 21st.
Right.
Well, I want the, I want your questions by Monday.
Yeah, okay. That, I would offer that as an amendment to the motion. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Do you have a planning board meeting coming up?
It hasn't been scheduled.
On the 8th.
Well.
I know you don't, you don't have a date.
We were waiting on a date from Jeremy who just left, so no, we do not have a date for a planning board meeting.
So do you want to tentatively schedule one and see if he can make that date while we're here? Does the 15th, is it the following Tuesday, which you traditionally give?
Does it find a thing?
Would it be appropriate for one of you to see if Jeremy can make that, no, with a phone call?
Sure.
I just don't, I don't want to leave those applicants waiting.
Want me to come?
Yeah, I mean, if you're mine.
I don't know if I have a site. Do you have a site? I don't think they have.
Jeremy does.
And just to be clear, because it seemed to have all these clarity issues, you will not be at that meeting, that planning board meeting.
It's a public meeting. I can go if I want.
Well, but Jim won't be part of the planning board.
Public meeting. I can go if I want.
I said you just wouldn't be part of the planning board.
It won't be on the table.
Isn't, I think that's what we struggled with.
No, I, I.
You don't listen. You just break that.
I listen to you.
No, you didn't. You said, "I am going." And I didn't say.
You said you will not be there. What's that?
The planning board's there.
Yep. November, November, yeah.
Is it 11th? Right here. Hi, can you hear something?
You can meet the 15th.
Done.
You can meet for one hour. 5:30, 6:00, 5:30, 6:00. What about, what's the next, what's the next date, Jeremy?
The next, following is Thanksgiving. The next, following week is Thanksgiving.
The Tuesday before Thanksgiving is the 22nd, if you'd like to meet if the board is available.
You said the 22nd, no.
Better?
Better, the whole time.
How's that work for the Tuesday, right?
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, the 20, we're going to meet the 22nd.
At 6:00?
No, no, it's going to be a regular planning board meeting, just a regular, okay, just a regular planning board meeting. And here, applicants and all that, okay.
I think it's time to hear the applications and-
Kathy, just to clear, I wasn't being argumentative. You looked at me and you said, "You will not be there." You did not say, "You will not be there," as a planning board member, you said, "You will not be there," and that's why I said-
But this is how at every meeting, it works out, you're tall, you're, it's so hard to have a conversation with you because you're automatically on the defensive, "Yes, I misspoke," and then clarified. But I always feel this with you.
So, the 22nd, that's at 6:00 P.M., correct?
Here, correct, okay.
Okay. So you're done with the planning board meeting, huh? That's where our-
We're going to have a discussion for the night.
Apologies to you, and I apologize if I became snarky.
You just want to know what we had in this. All good people here, you know, thoroughly included, everybody's a good person.
Everybody brings something positive, we all do. We actually bring that. I make a motion that we adjourn. Second.
Well, you guys can talk if you want, I just want-
Um, generally, you guys had a chance to look up what was proposed for the, for the reorganized, for the organization of-